Good evening. Welcome to the October 6th, 2025, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a full house tonight. That's awesome. Thank you all for being here. I assume it's for all of the fun proclamations, for the most part, that we have this evening. So I'm going to jump right into our proclamations and presentations. First up, we'll talk about Public Power Week. Lee Jackson from the Stillwater Electric Utility is here. I'm going to read this proclamation and I'll let you say a few things about public power. Whereas the residents of Stillwater, Oklahoma, value local control of community services and chose to operate a community-owned electric utility, and as customers and owners of this electric utility have a voice in utility operations and policies. And whereas Stillwater Electric Utility delivers reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity to homes, businesses, schools, healthcare providers, and our community using sound business practices to provide the best possible service at competitive rates. And whereas Stillwater Electric Utility is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of residents through financial support of the general government, including public safety, transportation, parks, library, and recreation. And whereas Stillwater Electric Utility is dependable and trustworthy, operating locally since establishment in 1901, to provide many consumer protections and making the community a better place to live and work, while also making efforts to protect the global environment. And whereas the Stillwater community joins with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in celebrating the value of public power. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Public Power Week, to recognize the Stillwater Electric Utility for its contributions to the community and the benefits of public power.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Lee Jackson. I'm the Engineering Manager for Stillwater Electric Utility. We appreciate this proclamation very much. This marks 124 years that the City of Stillwater has owned their electric utilities. So on behalf of all the utility employees, I graciously accept this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for all the work that you all do to keep the lights on.
Thank you.
I'm glad you guys were all here for this. He likes an audience. It's Fire Prevention Week, and here's Sparky. Whereas the City of Stillwater is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all residents and visitors, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk. And whereas home fires caused 2,890 civilian deaths in the United States in 2023, according to the U.S. Fire Administration's latest statistics. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Stillwater residents should make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Stillwater first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week serves to remind residents it's important to have a home fire escape plan. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week, and I urge all the people of Stillwater to plan and practice a home fire escape and a home fire escape plan and support public safety activities of Stillwater Fire and Emergency Services. Mr. Tharp?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counselors. We do appreciate this tonight. This week was pretty busy. We'll be in all six of the elementary schools doing a skit, talking about fire safety. And October is a very busy month for us because of different fall parties throughout the community, station tours, everybody wants a part of learning about fire safety. So we appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you for the work that you all do and for fire prevention education. I know the kids love it when Sparky shows up at the school, so appreciate all that.
All right. Thank you.
Sparky will be out in the hall for the rest of the evening.
Mr. Mayor, they were kind enough to give Morning Rotary Club a tour of the new station this last week.
Oh, nice.
It was truly awesome.
That's awesome.
Got to see some new tools in there, too.
Oh, yeah. Well, last time I was in there, we hadn't moved any of the equipment in yet, so it's...
It's all there now.
That's awesome. All right. Next up, we have Support Your Local Chamber Day, which is coming up on October 15th. So we have folks from the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce here, and I'll read this, and we'll let Elaine and her team talk to us a little bit more about the Chamber. Whereas the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce is an outstanding champion for our local businesses and entrepreneurs, fostering partnerships and providing essential guidance, resources, and advocacy that drive economic growth, innovation, and opportunity throughout our community. And whereas through its leadership, programs, and initiatives, the Chamber strengthens the economy, supports entrepreneurs, and ensures that Stillwater remains a vibrant and welcoming place to live, work, and visit. And whereas the Chamber's commitment to collaboration and innovation not only enhances the quality of life for current residents, but also lays a foundation for continued growth and economic stability for generations to come. And whereas celebrating and supporting the Chamber encourages civic engagement, honors the work of our business leaders, and reinforces the strong, resilient community that makes Stillwater unique. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 15th, as Support Your Local Chamber Day in Stillwater, to recognize the incredible work of the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce and to actively support its mission in shaping a brighter future for our community.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I always say that the Chamber is the front porch in the community, because usually we're the first call when someone moves into a community to find out what the great things are in this community. It's a great combination of our community, businesses, and leaders working together to help support local businesses, grow workforce development, and just truly help Stillwater thrive. The great thing tonight is a lot of people in here tonight are from Leadership Stillwater Class 34. They are to attend a city council meeting, so they will not be leaving after the proclamation. They will stay. And then also have some board members here tonight, our Chair, James Wells, and our Chair-Elect Clyde Wilson. So I want to thank you, and of course, my staff that I get to work with every day. So thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for doing what you do to help Stillwater thrive.
Thanks, Elaine. Thank you for all your work. Last of all, but certainly not least, we're going to talk a little bit about our sister cities update and a presentation about a trip that City Manager Brady Moore and I took this last week to visit our sister city of Kamioka, Japan, and to celebrate both the 40th anniversary of the sister-city relationship and the 70th anniversary of Kamioka as a city. They were incorporated seven years ago, a collection of villages and small towns in the area, all incorporated to make one city 70 years ago, so we were able to help them celebrate that. And we visited Kamioka last week. I think we've got some pictures. I don't know if they're going to show. Is this the time I'm supposed to do this? I don't, we didn't really rehearse this. Somebody might have to open that thing up. But we did travel to Kamioka last week, met with Mayor Katsuragawa, and exchanged some gifts. We've got some of the gifts that they presented to us up here on the front table. We were able to tour many of the local attractions. They have a beautiful river. Kamioka's in a mountainous, kind of semi-rural, mountainous region with the Hozu River that runs right through Kamioka. There's a great riverboat, flat-bottom boat, like fiberglass boat that feels like it's probably 60 years old, and you go through rapids and it's a little... The water was low when we were there, so it was a little less crazy, but it was a ton of fun. So, yeah, some pictures here. I don't know if you are just going to flip through them. That's Mayor Katsuragawa and I. And we attended a tree planting ceremony. That's a cherry tree there in, just outside of Kamioka City Hall. So we were joined at the, for this event, with Kamioka's other sister cities. They have a sister city in Mittelfeld, Austria, and a sister city in Sanjiro, Brazil, and then some friendship cities in Taiwan, and one in China. Everyone except the city in China was able to send representatives, and so we planted a cherry tree. I'm there with the mayor from Mittelfeld and Mayor Katsuragawa, and then the other representatives from the other cities that were able to join us. And we actually put dirt on the tree. One of the other really great things that the City of Kamioka did while we were there is actually honor Larry and Kyle Jones, who are folks here from here in Stillwater. And if you follow sister cities at all, or if you've been in Stillwater for very long at all, you probably know who Larry and Kyle were. Kyle unfortunately passed away about a year ago. And she and Larry were a huge, huge part of our sister-city relationship over the years. Really, Larry's written a column in the newspaper for many years about our sister cities and about Kamioka in general. They lived there for a while. But Kamioka specifically invited Larry to come, and he was one of three people that they honored on the 70th anniversary of their city for contributions to their city through his work with the sister-city relationship. So it wasn't, he wasn't just there as part of our delegation. He was there specifically to be honored by the City of Kamioka, which was really, really nice. And he was able to speak some about his dear wife, and it was a really, really nice ceremony for them. Okay, yeah. Yeah, a ton of staff at the city in Kamioka. That's J.C. Gray on the left there, who is an OSU graduate, and she worked with our sister-city council for several years here. She's now employed by the City of Kamioka in their International Relations Department. So she was there helping me, I think, translate a speech probably in this picture. But then Sam was also a former member of their staff. Just, they have a ton of folks in their city staff that helped with this entire delegation with all of the events and the translations and all that kind of thing. They were fantastic. This was our sake barrel ceremony. We had barrels of sake that traditionally are hammered open, broken open, to celebrate a big event. And we did that on the stage with, again, all the representatives from the other sister cities and several local politicians and governor of Kyoto, Vice Governor, I think, of Kyoto, prefecture was up there. Really, really cool event, really fun to be a part of. I got splashed with a little bit of sake, but it was okay. Actually, Brady talked, well, this next one, Brady didn't get any sake out of him, I don't think. You might have. But you talked to this guy for a while.
Yeah, this is what I wanted to share. The thing I took away from Kamioka so much, it's a beautiful community that really can relate to Stillwater. It's agriculture, education-based community. It's got mountains all around it. I wish we had those mountains here, but we have beautiful sunsets, so we'll take that. But no, this gentleman, but the people of Kamioka, getting to know them and just to see how much they pour into this relationship that we have with our communities. This gentleman was so excited, he came up and tapped me on the shoulder at the banquet that evening, and wanted, he had brought this old, kind of beat-up scrapbook that he's had, you can tell, forever. And he was so excited to show pictures. He couldn't speak English, but he was so excited to point these pictures. And you can see in that picture is a bunch of orange. That's because he was here, I believe, in '98 at our homecoming, and he was part of the delegation coming. And you could just tell, like, we called J.C. over to translate for us, and he was just so excited to show us the pictures and his time here in Stillwater and what it meant to him. And then he didn't realize Larry was there, because, and so Larry was sitting just behind J.C. in this picture. So they embraced, and they knew each other. And so I believe he's 91, and Larry's 89. I mean, they're some around that same age, and it was really special just to see that. And also, at the ceremony where Larry was honored afterwards, we saw multiple ladies that had, Larry had impacted their lives, and were in tears and wanted to embrace him. So it was just really cool to see, and this, I didn't have a good picture to show, but there was over 500 of their local folks that paid and signed up to be a part of this celebration night, and Mayor Joyce got to speak. And it was just, it was a really cool evening, and it was neat to just see these beautiful people and the way they've connected. No, that's just a picture of him and Larry right after that moment.
Go to the next one.
Now just set the tree.
Yeah, so we, our wives were able to accompany us on the trip, and yeah, that's the cherry blossom tree that we were able to plant. This is at Taisai Junior High, so we visited briefly. This is the school that most of our exchange, our student exchange programs happen with. I went last year with our student, our middle school exchange group to Taisai. We went and visited with the Taisai principal just for a little bit. He told us about their day and kind of what they do when we watched their kids are preparing for a field day. They were out practicing for a competition they had later that week against each other. They had like teams, internal teams at the school that were going to have a field day, and they were doing jump rope with like 25 kids at a time, and it was impressive.
And one difference there is their education system, their schooling from junior high down through elementary, is all falls under the city, city guidance of the mayor and the Kamioka City Hall. So, and you know, it was interesting, they noted that in their strategic plan that it was all about children. Like their focus right now is on children and the quality of life for children in their community. And you can talk a little bit about the environmental, they're the first city in Japan.
Yeah, they banned plastic bags from their community a few years ago, and to help clean up the river was a big part of that. They had a bunch of trash in the river that, which is a beautiful, beautiful place, and so it's really nice that they've been able to clean it up. But they've taken some very drastic steps to help, you know, their community be more welcoming. It's one of the things we talked about, I talked about with the mayor on a couple of occasions and some of the other city staff about, you know, how we both, you know, we have a lot to learn from each other about the fact that if we want our cities to succeed, we have to turn them into places where people want to live, right? Where people want to visit, where, you know, and that for them was a big part of, you know, creating a city that's very welcoming and cares for their children well, means that people will want to live there and move there. Same thing we focus on around here with public schooling and making sure we have a community where people want to come, visit, live, and play. And so, you know, it's cool to talk, be able to talk about those kinds of issues with people half, you know, half a planet away, who have the same concerns. And they, you know, we talk about, what are you guys doing to do that? And how can we learn from you, and how can you learn from us? It was, those are good conversations.
Donia, you can go through these pretty fast. To add on to that, this was the time we got to meet with the mayor and the superintendent of the school in his office. And on what Will just said, they were very interested to hear what was going on in Stillwater, what we were having success with, to hear ideas. Like, they really pour into this relationship.
Mayor Katsuragawa is very adamant, or, you know, interested in, he loves the school exchange programs, but he was talking about, like, older exchange programs, having, you know, high school students and then college students, and even like, he proposed an idea of like city, having city workers, folks who work for the City of Stillwater go over and work with them for, you know, several months at a time, and having their folks come over and sort of experience the United States for a while as well. So, yeah, it's, you know, there is a lot to learn. One of the things we were able to present with them, Iron Monk is making a new Japanese-style beer that we've named Shimaitoshi, which is Japanese for sister cities. That, Iron Monk will have that on sale coming up soon. And we had a custom label design that's got landmarks from Stillwater and landmarks from Kamioka, and the mayor was quite, I think, pleased with the kind of the art. It's in a sort of anime, Japanese art style. I can't, I don't know if you have a different picture of it, but we'll... We presented each other with proclamations. Yeah. I don't know how many other pictures are in here.
I think we're wrapping up. I thought these we were going to scroll through, so that's...
They had to sign a flag that all the cities, all their sister cities had signed a message on a big flag that we, that they're, you know, preserving in their hall, and I don't know how many more pictures are in here.
That's it.
Hey, there we go.
That's it. It was a great trip.
All night. Said it was going to be a short meeting. But no, that was, it was a fantastic trip. We are really, really grateful for that relationship we have with Kamioka. And I think one of the things Brady and I were talking about on the way back was just that, you know, more people in Stillwater should have the opportunity to experience the cultural exchange, the visit, getting over there, and the people that we met with. And I mean, they, you know, they treated us very well all week long. We had wonderful meals, met lots of different folks, spent time in lots of really beautiful places, and it's a relationship that we want to continue to expand. We want more people from this community to be able to go and to experience those folks. They'll actually be sending, well, Stillwater Middle School is sending students in two weeks. There's another group of seventh graders who will be going over later this month. And then next year, Kamioka will be sending students back here for the first time since 2023. And so we'll have the opportunity to host students here in Stillwater again. And so just a really great time. We'd be happy to talk to you more about it. Brady and I could probably talk to you all for another hour about all the cool things we saw over there, but would certainly encourage you, we have several representatives from our sister cities council here tonight, who have been stalwarts in maintaining this relationship over the last 40 years. And it's an important relationship for this, for us as a community, and something that we want to continue to champion and, again, to provide opportunities for more and more people in our community to have these kinds of interactions with our neighbors in Japan.
And I'll just invite, specifically thanking Stephanie Kinder for her incredible work in the sister cities. It's a passion of hers, it ties back to her family, the country of Japan, and that heritage. And so anyway, Stephanie pours so much into this, this relationship with this city and putting together the gifts and everything, all the travel plans. And so special thanks to Stephanie and her passion that she does serving for that.
I do also have a proclamation in recognition of the anniversary, so I'll go ahead and read that, and then would love to have our sister cities folks come up and join us for a photo. Whereas the State of Oklahoma, USA, and the prefecture of Kyoto, Japan, established a sister state agreement in 1985, followed by the establishment of a sister-city partnership between the City of Stillwater and the City of Kamioka on November 3rd, 1985. And whereas the partnership led to the creation of the Stillwater Sister Cities Council, which has coordinated numerous cultural, educational, business, and governmental exchanges between Stillwater and Kamioka, offering valuable opportunities for the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma State University, and Stillwater Public Schools to strengthen international understanding and relationships. And whereas the bonds of friendship have grown steadily stronger over four decades of exchanges, and both programs and individuals have been recognized by Sister Cities International with multiple awards for outstanding achievement. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, with, along with the Stillwater City Council and the City Manager, in cooperation with the Stillwater Sister Cities Council, commemorate this important milestone, celebrating our shared history and building towards a bright future together, do hereby proclaim a progress-together honor, in honor of the 40th anniversary of the sister cities partnership between Stillwater, Oklahoma, and Kamioka, Japan, November 3rd, 2025. if you are interested in being part of cultural exchanges with our sister city, please reach out with, to the Sister Cities Council and get involved with the work that they do. And, you know, we would love to see more and more people have the opportunity to go and take part in the kinds of things that we were able to see this last week. All right. Onto item four, the consent docket. Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
I move approval with consent.
Second?
Motion is second on the consent docket. Please vote. The vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That will take us to item seven, public hearings. 7A, receive public comment regarding request for a map amendment to rezoned property addresses 1421 West 8th Avenue from small lot, single-family residential to two-family residential, CC-25-140. Do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Henry?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counselors. My name is Henry B. Blaimer with Development Services, and tonight we have a map amendment for 1421 West 8th Avenue to rezone from RSS small lot, single-family residential to RT residential two-family. Here's the area outlined in pink. This property is on the southeast corner of 8th and Gray. For context, here's the hospital right here on the south side of 6th. Just south of that, we have the parking lot for the hospital. Just south of that is the proposed property to be rezoned. Here's the street view, which is from 8th Street looking south. You can see the house right here. The applicant has proposed to rezone the property as the part of the lot on the left side of the screen, which would be the east of the lot. They believe they can add on to the house to make it a duplex. A duplex is not allowed in the current zoning of RSS or small lot, single-family residential, therefore requiring them to rezone to RT to allow for this proposed addition. Here's the zoning map, which again shows the property outlined in pink to, and that property is owned RSS or small lot, single-family residential. To the west, we see O or Office, that's on the southwest corner of 8th and Gray, and on the north side of 8th, we see P for Public, which is that parking lot we referenced for the hospital. Here's the future lane use map for this property, which does show commercial uses for it. I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Henry. Counselors, any questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. I think I have two people signed up. Don Williams, or do you want to start? All right, let's start with Stephen Gose.
Don's here for moral support, so good evening, Counselors. Stephen Gose with Gose and Associates, 113 East 8th Avenue, here on behalf of our client, like Henry said, requesting a rezoning of this parcel to allow them to add on to the home and do a duplex. They looked originally about doing a minor subdivision, so they just build another house because there's quite a bit of land on the east side of the lot, but the dimensions don't work. So this request feel provides a good transition and buffer to the Office to the west and the hospital to the north. So if there's any questions, I can answer them, or after the public hearing, if Don needs to cover anything, he's here for that.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions? I don't have anyone else sign up for this public hearing. Was anyone else here planning to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Henry, what was the planning commission's recommendation?
Yes, sir, on September 9th, 2025, with a vote... Yes, sir, on September 9th, 2025, with a vote of three to zero, planning commission recommended that the city council approve the map amendment as presented.
Thanks, sir. Councillors.
Motion to accept planning commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation, please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Item 7B is receive public comment regarding request for a map amendment to remove property addresses 517 Southwest Street from the corridor redevelopment area planning district and zone as commercial general, CC dash 25 dash 141. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we did.
Henry.
Yes, sir. This one is a unique map amendment request. It is to remove the property from the corridor redevelopment area planning district and zone at CG or commercial general. Here's the property outlined in pink. This property is just west of Cowboy Corner and one lot north of 6th Street, um, just east of west. Here's a street view where you can see the existing vacant property. Um, I'll also point out the vacant property to the south, which is in between this property and 6th Street. Um, the reason they're requesting to re, the applicant is requesting to rezone this property is so that these two lots can be consolidated for a commercial development. Um, we don't allow two zoning districts on one parcel, so we couldn't allow them to consolidate these lots with two different zoning districts, so this is just to clean that up. Here is the current zoning map and as you can see, this southern parcel, which is the one they're hoping to consolidate with, is zone CG, commercial general. The northern parcel is in the corridor redevelopment area planning district, transect 5 or T5. Um, the use, which has proposed a food services would be allowed in either one of those zoning districts, so the use didn't come into play with this, um, rezoning request, it was just to consolidate those lots. Here's the future land use map, which does show low density for this property. I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
Councillors, any questions? Thank you, Henry. This time I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Ghost is back.
Uh, good evening again, here on behalf of our client, uh, seeking to rezon this. Like Henry said, it's T5 right now in the corridor redevelopment. Uh, we had to choose one or the other with 6th Avenue on the south, the, the commercial made more sense and the previous property owner had the two lots, sold them together and there used to be a house on this lot that's been torn down, so. Go ahead.
We did this before, right? Weren't there two lots that we, that got joined when they first cleared this and put it on the market? I think we pulled the, I feel like this is, this property has been before us. Anybody else remember that? It's just me? I think we did.
We weren't on that project, so.
Yeah, I think we did the same thing with the, the two lots that are there now. We pulled one of them out.
Pulled it back, okay.
So that, and joined it so that they would have those together, so anyway.
There's any questions now or?
I might just be making that up, but I feel like, I feel like we've had this conversation about this topic before.
That was Japan.
That was Japan. All right, thank you.
I don't have anyone else sign up to speak on this item. Anyone else here to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Henry, what's the recommendation on this item?
Yes, sir, on September 9th, 2025, with a vote of three to zero, planning commission recommended that the city council approve the map amendment as presented.
Thanks, sir. Councillors.
Motion to accept planning commission's recommendation.
Second.
Move a motion and a second, please vote. It's accepted with a vote of five to zero. Item 7C, receive public comment for a specific use permit to allow churches and other religious institutions in the small lot, single family residential district at property address is 418 East McElroy Road, CC dash 25 dash 142. We have good notice.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Bubelheimer.
Yes, sir. So as you just said, this is for a specific use permit to allow churches and other religious institutions in the RSS or small lot, single family residential zoning district located at 418 East McElroy Road. Here's the property outlined in pink. This property is north of McElroy Road, about a quarter mile west of Perkins. This property has access on to both McElroy Road as well as Star. Here's the street view, so this is from McElroy looking north onto the existing Hosanna Church structure. Um, the existing structure is a existing legal non-conforming use as a church or other religious institution does require a specific use permit in RSS or single family residential zoning. The church is proposing to expand, they're proposing a second building just to the left of this, which would be the west. Um, that expansion of the existing legal non-conforming use did require them to come into compliance, which required this specific use permit, which is why I report you today. Here's the zoning map where you can see the property outlined in pink, which is owned RSS, small lot, single family residential. Just to the south, we have CS or commercial shopping. To the southwest, we have CG or commercial general. And to the west, we have RTM, which is residential two family and multifamily. There's a good variety of uses right around this church. The future land use map does call for commercial uses on this property. And I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
Councillors. Thank you, Henry. This time I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up to speak on this item. Anyone here wishing to speak? I will close the public hearing. Henry, what's the recommendation on this item?
Real, real quick question, just to be sure, 418 East McElroy, um, when I Googled this and looked at it on a map, it's the gas station on the south side of the road.
Yeah, Google Maps is wrong.
Google Maps is wrong, okay. Thank you. That's all I needed to make sure of.
Okay, it's good to know.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't know Google could be wrong. It's a joke.
So, planning commission did recommend on September 16th, 2025, with a vote of three to zero, planning commission recommended that the city council approve the map amendment as presented.
Thank you, Henry. Councillors.
I move to accept the planning commission recommendation.
Second.
Sorry, I'm going to have to ask for some clarification. Um, staff's recommendation from the planning commission was to approve a map amendment and this is a specific use permit?
I didn't fix the slide, I apologize. It should be to approve the specific use permit as presented.
Could you please have an amended motion?
Uh, sure, I've moved to, uh, accept the planning commission recommendation for a specific use permit for the property addressed as 418 East McElroy Road.
Is there a second to the amended?
Second.
There we go. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That is approved with a vote of five to zero. Item eight is ordinances on first read. Ordinance 3582, an ordinance rezoning property addresses 1421 West 8th Avenue from small lot, single family residential to two family and multifamily district. This is from earlier this evening.
Motion to advance ordinance number 3582 to second read. Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3582 is advanced to second reading. Item B is ordinance 3583, an ordinance to remove property addressed as 517 Southwest Street from the corridor redevelopment area planning district and zone as commercial general district.
Motion to advance ordinance number 3583.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3583 is moved to second reading. Anybody else think it's weird we have a street named West?
Yes.
Really hard to say. Southwest Street. Uh, on second reading. Ordinance 3580, an ordinance rezoning property addressed as 1212 South Perkins Road from light industrial to commercial general.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3580.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3580 is adopted. Ordinance 3581, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending chapter two administration, article six, financial affairs, division one generally, by amending section two dash five eighty-three, finance department, by providing that the director of finance may also hold the title of chief financial officer and that all duties, powers and responsibilities apply equally to the dual title of director of finance and chief financial officer, repealing all ordinances of the contrary and providing for separability.
I move to adopt ordinance 3581.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3581 is adopted. Item nine is reports from the officers in the board. Ms. Carnley?
Nothing to report.
Nothing else to correct?
Yeah, good catch.
Here to keep you in line.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, the city of Stillwater has teamed up with United Way of Payne County to host the coolest fundraiser ever, a cornhole tournament on the block 34 lawn. Um, so save the date and join us on block 34 Friday, November 7th, beginning with check-in around, uh, 10:30 AM and the tournament starts at noon. Uh, this will be a beanbag tossing, smack talking, food trucks, music and more. Uh, sign up online, uh, you can sign up online at theunitedwaypaincounty.org. All proceeds will go to the United Way, which helps our local nonprofits in the community. So join us for the Bean Bag Benefit. Is that what we're calling it? All right, I like the, I like the creativity. Bean Bag Benefit. So, um, this is going to be a fun event and a way that the city of Stillwater and our staff and others in the community can help, uh, raise funds for the United Way.
Awesome. It's going to be fun. I'm going to take issue with it being the coolest fundraiser ever because the class 34 folks, uh, from leadership Stillwater are also throwing a benefit on block 34 called the Harvest Festival, like the one from Parks and Rec, which is.
Oh, nice, nice.
Going to be amazing. Little Sebastian's going to be there and I'm so excited about it. You guys have no idea.
Sounds like a competition between fundraisers.
When is that one? November 1st, so we'll have them back to back weekends. Block 34 is inspiring lots of cool ideas for the community.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. Save the date and plan to join us for the final community meeting on the Envision 2045 Comprehensive Plan. Ah, we'll meet on block 34 at the Simmons Bank Pavilion, beginning at 5:30 PM on Thursday, October 23rd. After that, we will share with the planning commission and city council for review and adoption in November. We hope you can join us on the 23rd and see updates and share your thoughts. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/Envision. This is the culmination of a lot of effort on, on our city staff and, uh, members of the community working to develop this new comprehensive plan, so, um, please, please show up and, and contribute to this last, uh, community session.
That, I think it's also an awesome idea to do that on block 34. Um, hopefully the weather holds up.
Yeah, I hope so.
Councillor Hawkins.
Lexicon is back and better than ever. For those who do not know what Lexicon is, it's Stillwater's cultural districts free mini comic convention for fans of comic books, science fiction, gaming of all types, cosplay, anime and pop culture. I had to ask how to pronounce some of those. Events are scheduled for, scheduled for Thursday, October 23rd through Saturday, October 25th, with the main event on Saturday, 10 AM to 4 PM at multiple locations, including the library and the community center. For a full list of events and details, go to stillwaterok.gov/lexicon.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Councillor Clark.
On Saturday, November 1st, the city's watershed quality department will host our bi-annual household hazardous waste collection event. The event will be from 8 AM to 1 PM at the Convenience Collection Center located at 807 South Perkins Road. During this event, residents are encouraged to drop off any household pollutants for free. Accepted items include oil-based paints, pesticides, herbicides, household cleaning products, pool chemicals and more. The Convenience Collection Center will still accept regular trash and recycling that day. Trailers and commercial waste are not allowed and yard waste is not collected until after 1 o'clock that day. More details are available at stillwaterok.gov/HHW.
Always helpful, thank you. Councillor Harden.
It is that time of year to update information on the SAID program, which stands for Special Needs Alerts on Identification. This volunteer program is in its second year and is led by Stillwater Police and end the dispatch upon request of healthy communities, healthy children. The information provided explains special needs and health conditions to first responders prior to arriving in an incident to improve the response, interaction and communication with all individuals involved. So for example, if there's an autistic person living at home or somebody mobility impaired, then the police will be aware of it before they get there. Participants, parents, caregivers submit this information and it is securely entered into the emergency responder dispatch, dispatch system. The SAID program is not public record and will only be used by Stillwater Police and local first responders. For more information, contact SPD's records department at 405-742-8222 or go online to
It's a great program. I will, uh, let you know that the 104th edition of America's Greatest Homecoming and Stillwater's Communitywide Family Reunion will include the walk-around on Friday, October 17th, with street closure starting at 5 PM. The Sea of Orange Parade will be on Saturday, October 18th at 9 AM. We did get a late football game this year, which is good. These, this year's parade will actually begin with a full block dedicated, uh, to a memorial in honor of the 10-year anniversary, uh, of the homecoming tragedy. Riderless horses will lead the way as a solemn tribute to the lives lost. Kickoff for the football game will be at 7 PM. Many thanks to our, our city departments, including emergency management, police, fire, public works, communications, community resources, water, waste management, parking and more, who go way above and beyond to ensure that homecoming events are fun and safe. Go Pokes, beat the Bearcats. Anything further from the council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, I'll call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for October 6, 2025. Trustees, questions, comments, action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. Consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned and that concludes our meetings for the evening.